There was a comment made during the break that the microphones up here were not on. Can you all hear us in the very back, back there? Commissioners, make sure that all your mics are on, please.
I'll just put the buttons down. No, the button's up.
Mine's down.
Button's down, thank you. Now, it says here, looking at the graphic they gave us.
Well, Tom's is down, and his is working.
I don't have no instructions.
All right, can you all hear us on the back row, back there now, please? Okay, all right.
See, this is Tom.
All right, Mac, continue on. Here we go.
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman. Our next item on the agenda is the Sandeston Owners Association office building. This item was continued from our last Planning Commission meeting, and the applicant is prepared to make their presentation.
Okay, one thing before we start on this particular item, I'm going to ask for some clarification from the county attorney. According to the minutes from last time, we had closed the meeting to public comment. This, to me, means, this is me speaking, this, to me, means that there is no public comment on this particular item tonight, that the meeting will be conducted through the attorney here and through the homeowner association representative.
That's correct. I'm reviewing the minutes. You closed the public hearing portion, and now it's time to hear from the applicant on rebuttal, and then from the staff. That is correct.
Mr. Davis, at some point, Jill Crew, attorney for the Reeves.
You'll have to, if you're going to address the board, you'll have to come to the podium, please.
You said they do have a chance to rebut.
If there's something new brought up, then the opposition would have a chance to rebut. But if there's nothing new brought up from the applicant, then I wouldn't expect they would. That's correct.
If it would please the commissioners, thank you.
Have you been sworn?
I have been sworn in, thank you. I'm Jill Crew. I'm an attorney with the law firm of Crew and Crew. I want to point out that there is a revised staff report. It just came out this week. And what it does say, under findings of fact, unless other evidence is presented to the contrary, the requested project is consistent with the comp plan and LDC. This language should give us the opportunity to present evidence which shows that the project is not consistent with the land development code or the comprehensive plan. Pursuant to the Walton County Land Development Code, Chapter 10, it does indicate that in conducting quasi-judicial hearings such as this, your fundamental goal is due process, allowing people, public, interested parties such as the Reeves, whose property is actually going to be affected because of the driveway. All these people in a quasi-judicial hearing should be allowed to speak and address the issues, especially since there's been a revised staff report that has been issued.
With all due respect, the revised staff report, that the portion you quoted, that's exactly what it said when we had the public portion of the hearing at the last hearing. So unless the applicant presents today on rebuttal evidence that was of a new issue or a new problem or a new standard that we did not consider the last time or was not testified to the last time, then the public portion of the meeting was completed at the last, at the last meeting of this board. And so the way Planning Commission meetings work is that we have, the applicant presents, then you have, let me start over, I'm wrong. The staff gives their recommendation, the applicant presents, the public, or anybody in opposition has a right at that point to respond. And then if there are issues raised in the response that the staff needs to consider, then they can do that, and then if we don't consider it and vote on that night, then we can come back on a second night for the applicant to address the issues that were raised. And that's where we are in this process.
All right. Because it was my understanding that the issues that were open at the time, which should give the public, everyone an opportunity to respond to, is Sandeston's comment that it wasn't clear that they could control the number of people coming and going onto my client's property. And we do now have new information that there is transportation going on. There's been a major wreck as a result of Sandeston's use of my client's property.
Ms. Crew, again, I don't mean to interrupt, but that issue is exactly the issue, if I remember correctly, and I think I do, that issue about who's going to be allowed to use the easement, who's going to, that traffic issue is what we are back here tonight for the applicant to respond to. That's the exact issue we're back here to respond to.
All right, I understand, and we just respectfully ask that we be given an opportunity to address any of the comments that are made tonight.
That's...
And normally, that does not happen, and I would not recommend it to the board at this point.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I'd like to make a motion that we, that we open it back up and that we allow them to rebut.
I don't, I don't think that that would be...
I made a motion, I'd like to have it heard.
Let me stop. The commission is always in charge of its own procedures, so Mr. Patton's motion, if voted on, would be, voted on and passed, would be well taken.
I have a motion to reopen the entire case again. Do we have a second?
I'll second it, where the board can at least discuss it.
I have a motion and a second. Time for discussion.
Final question?
What's, what, I guess my question would be to y'all. I know you opened up everything again, the whole thing, but I don't see a problem if there's something brought up to allow them, at least the attorney representing, to respond. I don't think you open it up for the entire public hearing.
Well, if you go back to the same thing, Ted, you're going to have to open up the whole thing. Like you said, we're going to have to start from the get-go.
I don't think we need to start. I'm asking Mark.
I didn't say start from the get-go. I think we can build on the evidence, but I'd be happy to change my motion if it helps everybody to say that the, because there's more than just the attorney, there's an attorney she may need to bring in support of other, of other experts here, that we, I'll modify my motion to be that we allow the owners of the property to rebut any testimony that's given.
So if you're going to do that, then you have opened it up to anyone else, because you can't specify just one individual?
I said...
What I would suggest, Mr. Patton, let me just make a suggestion. What I would suggest would be, if you want the opportunity for the owners or Ms. Crew's clients to have an opportunity to respond to the, to the applicant's rebuttal, that they could only respond to the issues raised by the applicant, and that would limit it to that issue.
Okay.
Okay, I have a motion and...
I'll modify my motion.
You got that carried. That's okay, all right.
Allow rebuttal of only new issues?
Or issues raised by the applicant.
Only those issues raised by the applicant, tonight, not previous, not previous, but tonight, right?
Right.
Okay, we've all heard the motion. Any further discussion? All in favor of reopening it? Aye?
Aye.
Aye. It's unanimous.
There you go.
Mr. Chairman, board members, the board did close the public hearing, and I think there's a little difficulty opening it up again, because there's people here who heard that the board would close the hearing, and they're not here to give any more input. So I think you do have a due process issue when you did that publicly. But put that aside, the board, it was Mr. Patton's motion, said they wanted, the issue was access, and whether the homeowners would be allowed access through this easement. And that's my understanding of it. The homeowners are willing, excuse me, willing to stipulate that there will be no homeowner access, and the access will be limited to only employees in emergency situations, ambulances, things of that nature. And so we're willing to go on the record and stipulate, stipulate that to make it a condition to eliminate that issue whatsoever. So I don't think that's fairly debatable. That's, that's an issue we're willing to do. And we are asked, asked to do that, and the board insinuated that's what they wanted done, and we're willing to do that. And we think that solves the problem and the concern and the angst that was, that the board was going through at the last, last board meeting. So I don't know how to address that any further. Dean can come up and say that, but it's going to be limited to that. Do you have any question?
I have a question. How do you, how do you intend to enforce that?
By electronic gate, that the only people that'll have access to it is an employee, and of course, whatever we have to tell the emergency folks, and emergency personnel and emergency situations.
And again, just for clarification, employees of the Sandeston Owners Association?
Employees of the Sandeston, excuse me, good, good point, Mark. Employees of Sandeston Owners Association, not, not development.
Got you.
So if there's any questions, I mean, that's what we're willing to do. So we, we, I think we solved the concerns, hopefully.
Can you, you or some of the directors of the Sandeston Owners Association tell us how many employees that is? Because it came out in testimony last time that there were all of the security people and security vehicles, and, you know, they pick up garbage, they do all kinds of things. I don't know, I don't know, I know there's a lot of security guards there, and there's a lot of, I don't know if they're, if the tram drivers work for them, I don't know who their employees are.
Well, I don't know.
It's far, far more than the number of employees that are going to sit in those two little buildings.
Dean, do you have a grasp on it?
We need to ask one of the board members to tell us how many employees.
This is the president of the SOA, Ken.
Please state your name, if you were sworn in.
I was sworn in. My name is Ken Lloyd. I'm president of the Sandeston Homeowners Association, and I want to go on the record that the Sandeston Homeowners Association is not the Sandeston Golf and Beach Resort. We are homeowners. We're all volunteers here on this board that we have. To try to answer your question, the association right now has approximately 67 or 80 employees. Well over 40, maybe as many as 44 or 5 are security officers, who are itinerant workers, if you will. They man, 1, 2, 3, existing general access gates, 24/7. They're all, all 40-plus are not there at the same time. We have a few that are in patrol vehicles inside of the resort. They will not be going out of the resort, and into the resort through this entrance. There's no need to. In terms of the people that will work on site, we'll have two offices there, and they're existing buildings. We're going to modify both of them. The northernmost building, which is closest to the resort, will house approximately 18 to 20 people. I suspect that it won't take them very long to figure out that it's still best to go in and out of the main traffic lights. They're not going to, I don't expect them to be using the, this access. The other building will house our security dispatching office and supervisor or two for our maintenance operation. And again, these maintenance guys are not, we don't have a vehicle, a fleet of vehicles that we maintain on the property. These are maintenance of lakes, roads, drainage, so they're out, they're out on the property. They're not, they're not going in and out of there very much. So we don't really anticipate a whole lot of traffic going in and out of there, and as Mr. Vorbeck has already stipulated, we are prepared to not allow our homeowners or general public to go in and out of here.
And I just have a question, and I'm sorry, I may have misunderstood you, Mr. Vorbeck. The way I wrote down that your stipulation was that employees only would use it, and only in emergency situations?
No, no, no. Emergency. Emergency situation. For example, let's say there was a major fire or flood, or something happened on the resort.
Or ambulances, fire trucks.
Fire trucks, please, okay.
Now, and you're president of the SOA, not, not the Sandeston Owner, Homeowners Association?
I am president of the Sandeston Owners Association, which is not...
Good, okay, I just want to make sure, because you introduced another party in there, so I, thank you.
Well, the party, I was trying to differentiate that we are not part of Sandeston Investments, the developer of the resort.
Okay, very good.
That answers your question, Mr. Patton.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else have any questions for us to talk to?
The, you know, just, just a point of clarification, what the other, the opponents have stated, they don't have any problem, problem, if you remember publicly, and with the project, they have a problem with the issue with the access road. And so this idea of bringing, opening it up and bringing the other comp plan issues or whatever, and it's really, should not be allowed. But if there's any other questions, I think that solves out the problems if there's something else.
I have, I have one thing for you, Mr. Vorbeck. Since Mr. Patton asked that question, which was a very important question, how many, how many employees? Now, these employees that the gentleman there talked about, 16, 18 maintenance people, you know, the numbers that he put out there, these people are not all on duty during the day, or 24 hours a day. There's some in, some gone, some at home.
Security, that's true, security.
Yeah, so they're...
Yes, they're not all there at one time, and you're absolutely correct.
They're not all going in and out every single day.
Exactly.
Okay, all right, that was, that was the point I wanted to make. They're not all just accessing it every day.
Correct.
Okay.
So there were some other issues that, that I think my motion included, including, and it appears that, I can't remember what that was old and what was new, but basically going back to DCA and studying attorney movements and so on, seeing if we can come up with a better, better mousetrap. Do you have anything?
Well, DCA, what DCA was going to be asked is, what if the homeowners came through? And I think DCA notified everybody that, no, owners aren't to go through, and that's what we're stipulating to. That's what was DCA. Is Dean's here to, if there's a question you want specifically to ask him, Tom?
I was just hoping that, and actually, other governments, other, other governments do require operation studies, which is a tragedy that it doesn't appear Walton County does require it, because it really, really, for this kind of an application where you have a need for turn lanes, potentially turn lanes, left-hand turn lanes interfacing intersections with the Hidden Dunes, potential conflict that we heard in testimony, but typically a county reviews those kind of things, but I guess we don't require that here, so. But I, I was hoping that they, they would look at it and come up with some additional safety standards or whatever that might be helpful.
You're correct. As I recall your motion, there was a part two, and again, for the record, Dean Burgess with Emerald Coast Associates, and I have been sworn. The, the second part was to discuss with DOT and county engineering regarding geometry improvements that can be made to the, to help the intersection. I think the response to that's twofold. One, we have reduced the, the concern with that by reducing the traffic, by limiting it to only emergency situations and employees. Secondly, we did contact, have further discussion with Rusty Williams at DOT, and he maintains that the intersection is, meets their criteria. And I did also have a discussion with Chance. Chance concurred with what Rusty said, it's really DOT's road and their decision as far as geometry changes. But he also agreed that there's, there's only so much that can be done in the space that, that we have, and it matches the other accesses, access points along Highway 98 for similar-sized businesses. And we certainly don't trigger, there isn't a requirement for operational analysis, but we don't trigger that trip generation to, to warrant it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else have...
I have one more thing. Basically, just as another, and this is, this is a little far-reaching, and is beyond the scope of what you've asked for, but it seems like if there was a joint venture between the Reeves and the SOA, that the ideal situation would be to align with Hidden Dunes and to put in a signalized intersection. And I've made, I've, I've driven it, and from, from the warrants I've gotten from DOT, basically, if you lined up with Hidden Dunes, you'd have supporting traffic. You could actually allow homeowners to come and go, and it would mean getting a new easement from the Reeves, but basically, we could end up with a far better situation than the, than the current potential disaster, because you folks are setting it up with very, I mean, yes, you meet code, and it's the best that you got right now, but I think there's a greater solution that could be had out there. And it's a shame that Sandeston owners can't come and go out of there. And I think, and I think it's going to ruffle a lot of feathers, and, you know, I guess they'll learn to live with it. But I also think we're going to lose people, so. I know this isn't part of your application, not what we're going to vote on tonight, but I do think there's a loftier solution, and you've got more than a half an hour, half an hour, half a mile to each light, therefore, there's no reason why you shouldn't have the supporting traffic, et cetera, and get that to work.
I don't think I'm speaking out of turn, that if that were offered by the Reeves, I think the SOA would entertain coordinating an intersection. I haven't, I haven't had that discussion with the SOA, but I don't think I'm talking out of turn.
And I understand, but, but, but I don't think this is the, I don't think this is, assuming that it passes, is the right solution or a permanent solution. I think maybe it's a Band-Aid, and it's a lousy Band-Aid.
And this, the discussion that's taking place now is something that can be, that can be brought up later on at, at another meeting, or at the BCC?
Agreed, or, yeah.
Okay. Does anyone else have any questions for the applicant?
Mr. Chairman, there's nothing been brought up new. This is not any new testimony, so, you know, I don't know. It answers that question, and we addressed it. So I would like to...
I'd say the only thing I heard, frankly, that was new was that the Department of Transportation and the DEO have now considered the number of people traveling as presented, and that is okay with them. That's new. That was not, because the numbers have changed. So if they have information about that, I think that would be something they could testify.
Numbers changed. I don't, I don't think they...
I don't think the numbers have changed. What we've done is we've gotten back to what they originally applied for. What we've finally done is we finally had a stipulation that what they applied for is what they meant to apply for, and they're not going to try to stretch it, because basically, we had, we had a little stretch factor that came out of testimony.
You're exactly right.
So really, nothing's changed, other than we're not...
It's the same thing we heard first meeting.
Same thing you heard before. So what I'm asking you is the board vote in favor of this with that condition, and recommend it to the Board of County Commissioners.
Thank you, Mr. Vorbeck. Okay, anyone in the audience care? Just, no, that's right, I'm sorry, just the staff, I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
Renee Bradley, for the record, and I have been sworn. I would like to concur with Emerald Coast Associates. We did check with DOT, staff also checked with DOT on this issue to see if there was anything possible they could recommend for us to do at that intersection. We also have great concern about the wrecks that happened on US Highway 98. We also checked with DOT, as the motion was, to see if they, if they had any notion of the owners using that access. They did not, and stipulated that if the owners were to use that access, then they would need to see an additional traffic analysis on that, and they could possibly get a binding letter. But at this time, being this meets code, staff still recommends approval of this project. Excuse me.
Anyone have any questions? No, I'm sorry.
I would just like to stipulate the conditions again for the record, just so that we have them in there. Number one, if in the future, if the project site is no longer used by the SOA, the new tenant owner will provide the county with a transportation analysis demonstrating no additional impacts are occurring on 98, or if impacts do occur, they are properly mitigated. The SOA office will maintain electric gate with limited access only for SOA personnel and emergency personnel or emergency vehicles. No through traffic for owners or other patrons is allowed. Fire department conditions. Additionally, the proposed gate shall require a full review for approval. If approved, a Knox key switch shall be installed for emergency access. Lightweight trust place cards, if applicable, shall be installed prior to the issuance of the CO in accordance with Florida statutes, section 633027, if applicable. Thank you. Can I ask any questions?
Yes. I don't know if we ever get it straightened out with regard to the comp plan concerns with the coastal center being primarily the coastal center, of the two coastal centers, I get them confused, but the one that we're in here is primarily a residential designation?
It also has commercial uses and allows...
Commercial.
Office in that use.
Okay, okay.
Any other questions for Renee? Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Attorney, the only, the only public is the attorney, right?
Well, it's my belief, at this point, you don't do that, because the rebuttal didn't raise any new issues.
Okay, so...
And the motion in the second was, has any new information issues?
Okay, so...
Time to vote would be my recommendation.
Okay, Commissioners?
Now, Ms. Patton may want to raise an objection to that, as you can certainly do that.
Yes, with all due respect, I do object to preventing the Reeves, who's, who are the property owners, whose name does not appear on the application, which should, since they own the property, we're discussing. Remember, they, they purport to have an easement. That's not a property interest, that's a privilege. So according to your land development code, all property owners must sign, the application must consent. My clients are a property owner, where they're going to be traversing over, they're going to be expanding the driveway, making major modifications, they've submitted an FDOT application, connector application. My clients have not approved of any of this. And now, for the first time, we're hearing there may be 60 to 70 people going up and down? My clients object to this. In fact, they object to this Sandeston using any portion of their driveway. Why? It was never intended to have commercial activity. It's 12 feet wide at the point in which it goes onto Highway 98.
This is way beyond, way beyond.
I agree, Mr. Vorbeck. And Ms. Crew, you voiced your objection, but I believe it's beyond the step of what was earlier.
All right. I would, just for, for the record, I would like to refer you to a case...
Ma'am?
...that specifically limits the ability of Sandeston to use this driveway for commercial purposes. Mr. Davis, if, if you would refer to case number 93-0743, it's in the First District, Reeves versus Hidden Dunes?
Give us that number again, please.
I know it, I've got it, thank you. Reeves versus Hidden Dunes.
Okay, thank you very much.
If you'd like the relevance of this case, I'd be happy to read it to you that...
We don't, we don't need that. We don't need that. We, we understand that you have objected, and your objection is noted.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Commissioners, it is time for a vote.
Motion.
Motion, I'm sorry, for a motion.
I'd move that we approve the application as recommended by staff. I think that the questions have been answered satisfactorily immediately.
I have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion?
And I hate to clarify motions again, but I was assuming that's with all the conditions. Is that correct?
With all the conditions, that's correct.
Yes, as reiterated by Renee. Okay, I have a motion and a second. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye? Anyone opposed?
All opposed.
Okay, we have 1, 2, 3, 4 ayes, 1 nay. The motion is carried. Thank you. And please make sure that the objection is noted in the minutes.
That's it.
We, no, we still got one more, don't we?
Yeah.
Yeah, we still got one more.
We'll get one more tonight.
Inlet beach.
Oh, yeah.
Oh, this is the one where we don't really, we're 100 times...
Okay, please, please, if you're going to be discussing anything, please discuss it outside, so we're not interrupted here. We still have one more project on the agenda.
We'll talk about Maggie.
Okay, Commissioners, we still have one more item on the agenda tonight, and that is a return... a return of the Inlet Beach project that we had said that we would give them 15 minutes. Remember now that this project has already been voted on by the Planning Commission. There was some discussion regarding this after the fact, and they asked to come back, and when Mr. Dice called me and asked me if I would consider it, I told him that I would consider it, but it would have to be limited in scope, and you have 15 minutes, and that's the max.
Now, just a second, I'm confused. We didn't consider this. We told them that there was a problem with the, as I recall, maybe I wasn't at the right meeting, but because of the fact that there was a dispute as to whether it was part of the Inlet Beach Traditional Neighborhood Plan, correct? And therefore...
No, they wanted a change of land use. Right, Mac, they wanted it to be...
But we didn't hear it. We didn't, we...
Yes, sir. Our position at the last hearing on this particular project was that it was inconsistent with the Inlet Beach Traditional Neighborhood Plan's land use map, and we recommended a large-scale amendment to amend the comprehensive plan and that component of the comprehensive plan so that this project could move forward. I did confer again with our land use attorney, Greg Stewart, this afternoon, and he is in agreement with our position on that particular point, that this requires a large-scale amendment to amend the comprehensive plan component of the Inlet Beach Traditional Neighborhood Plan and that particular land use, that the neighborhood commercial does not allow for residential use. And I think that a plan can be amended. I don't think the neighborhood would be opposed to that, but I think that's the appropriate legal remedy.
And, Mr. Patton, you actually voted to table the matter until that was done, is my recollection.
Okay.
All right, sir.
Thank you.
15 minutes?
I hope it's shorter.
Talk fast. Ross Spinkley with Seaside Engineering and Surveying.
You were sworn?
Yes, sir. If you would, if you please turn to your staff report for this project. There's two documents that I'm going to talk about. One is a staff report, and one is this, I believe you have this colored aerial included in your packets.
Yep.
We're pointing some stuff out on that. But according to the staff report, the property land use category is neighborhood infill, neighborhood commercial. It's neighborhood infill according to the future land use map, and the Inlet Beach Neighborhood Plan says that it's neighborhood commercial. NPA infill, the primary use of NPA infill is single-family residential. That's the primary allowed use. And so, with all due respect, I disagree with the staff that we need any kind of amendment to the comprehensive plan. What I'd like to do is go through that map with you real quick, and some of the history of some of the projects out there. And first, and I'd also like to say that the project currently is residential. There are three residential buildings on the property, so I don't, we do not understand why we have to change the land use to something when we're going to be consistent with what's out there now. We're going from three residential units to six residential units. We're under the four unit per acre requirement. The project right next to us is at eight units per acre, single-family residential. We're surrounded by residential, okay? Now, the Inlet Beach Neighborhood Plan, it has never been adopted as an overlay district that I can find. Is that true?
May I address this?
Yes.
Thank you. Brian Underwood, Walton County Planning Department. The Inlet Beach Neighborhood Plan effectively is an overlay district, which is adopted into the comprehensive plan. So it is an overlay district.
Thank you, Ryan.
According to the Land Development Code, here it is. Land Development Code, Chapter 2, page 55 of 68, revised June 2011, states, and this is the section on overlay districts and the process to have those approved, it states that the Inlet Beach Neighborhood Plan shall remain a part of the Walton County Comprehensive Plan unless the Inlet Beach Neighborhood changes the plan to an overlay district as described It's not an overlay district right now, because the Land Development Code is suggesting that it's in the future that they can change it to an overlay district. So, you know, right now, the future land use map, it reflects overlay districts. All the approved overlay districts are reflected on the future land use map. The map has been revised, and right now, the future land use map shows this property as NPA infill. The Inlet Beach Plan is not reflected on the future land use map, okay? So, back to the Inlet Beach Plan, the plan itself states that it's a guide. According to the Statement of Purpose in Section 1.01, this plan is a guide for future development. This plan establishes a specific combination of uses that relates to the adjacent existing conditions, and in effect, preserve or enhance the desirable aspects of existing development in the adjacent areas, and ensures compatible new development. And as I've said, we're surrounded by residential. The use of the word "guide" would indicate that the planner has a discretion to determine use as long as compatibility with existing surrounding uses is maintained. Appendix E. Land Use Patterns states, "A neighborhood commercial has emerged along U.S. 98, that is, the east-to-west transit through northwest Florida. The land use patterns described in the next section represent established and projected land use patterns for Inlet Beach. Since large parcels of land in the northern section of this community are not developed, this community design will provide planners with enabling guidelines as the community matures." Okay? So how has the community matured since this plan was adopted in 1996? And this is when I'm going to look at this map. The first thing that's happened, we know 98 was widened to four lanes. In the south side of 98, that's where DOT acquired their right-of-way. All of these colored parcels on your map, these hatch-colored parcels, are designated as a neighborhood commercial in the Inlet Beach Plan. The blue, these blue parcels were approved and platted by Walton County as single-family residential. I was the engineer of record on Waterside, Waterside Phase 2, and the Grove and Inlet Beach, so I'm very familiar with them. They were the same situation, NPA infill, neighborhood commercial, and the Inlet Beach Neighborhood Plan, and this body and the Board of County Commissioners approved single-family residential in these areas, okay? So as a result of 98 widening, several of these parcels on the south side can't be developed as commercial anyway, they're too small. You have all the scenic corridor requirements and the buffers, in particular, these here, these are still identified as neighborhood commercial in the Inlet Beach Plan. There's possibly three left on the south side that could potentially be neighborhood commercial. And as you can see, we've got three here that were used by DOT for retention pond. We have two here that were used by Ocluse Gas. We have several green here that are currently residential, including the subject parcel. But there is no commercial on the south side at this time. So how has the community developed over time? It's residential on the south. So I believe we're consistent with the Inlet Beach Plan in proposing residential on this project.
Can I ask a question, and I'm sorry to interrupt you.
Yes, sir.
Your whole argument is essentially centered on Inlet Beach Plan not being adopted for your particular piece of property. Is that what I understand?
No. Well, one of the arguments is that it's not an overlay district. So how does it apply?
You do admit that it's in the comprehensive plan.
It is part of the comprehensive plan, but so is the large, I mean, the future land use map.
Okay. I just want to make sure I understood that.
So, in Appendix D. Neighborhood Commercial, the Inlet Beach Neighborhood Plan states, "As described in the TND requirements, both sides of U.S. 98 display similar uses on facing streets. The established land use pattern shall be the land use for properties bordering 98. There is no question that the established land use pattern on the south side of 98 is single-family residential. Since the subject parcel is surrounded on three sides by residential and is currently residential, there currently is no commercial development on the south side of 98, and the county has approved and platted residential subdivisions within this land use designation in the past. A single-family residential subdivision on the subject parcel is compatible and therefore consistent with the Inlet Beach Neighborhood Plan, the comprehensive plan." I mean, you know, I've heard staff say that they want to be consistent. Well, if we want to be consistent, this is the way that it's been interpreted since '04, '03, maybe '02, when I first did one of these. So now, we're changing our interpretation, okay? We're being inconsistent now. We're trying to be. Thank you. That's all I have.
Anyone have any questions for this gentleman? Thank you.
Thank you.
It's not time for public, it's not time for public. Ryan? You already finished?
Without regard to what may have occurred in the past, I rely on one statement. If the department has made a mistake in the past, we're not obligated to continue to make the same mistake, just to be consistent. We believe that any development, and developments that have been recently approved in Inlet Beach, and there are several, are consistent with both the comprehensive plan, future land use map, and the Inlet Beach land use map. And that is our, that is our current policy, and we believe this project is approvable if the Inlet Beach Plan is amended to allow residential use on that particular parcel. But we are not being inconsistent, and we are not bound to continue to make a mistake that may have been made by prior staff in the past. And I'm not really making a comment on that, but that's our present policy. You've got to be consistent with the future land use map and the comprehensive plan, and because this Inlet Beach Neighborhood Plan is a component of the comprehensive plan, we can't deviate from that either. Staff doesn't have latitude to deviate from exactly what it says. You have to amend the comprehensive plan to change that.
But it is infill?
Excuse me?
This is an infill?
This is a neighborhood infill on the future land use map, component of the comp plan, and it's neighborhood commercial in the Inlet Beach Neighborhood Plan. And there have been several projects that this board has recommended approval for in recent, in recent months, that have been consistent with both. In fact, we changed, we amended the Inlet Beach Neighborhood Plan just a few minutes, a few months ago for the 30 Avenue Project, which is now under construction.
Yeah, that's right.
And that's why we amended the Inlet Beach Neighborhood Plan.
So what you're saying, Mac, is that if this gentleman here and the applicants that are looking for this get the Inlet Beach Plan amended, then it would fit. Right now, it does not fit unless they amend the Inlet Beach Plan.
Yes, sir, and we agree that this would be a less intense use of that particular parcel than other things that could go in there in the present neighborhood commercial land use category in the Inlet Beach Plan, and also be consistent with the neighborhood infill category on the future land use map.
Now, what about his points about the fact that it is referenced in the comp plan, but it's not actually an overlay district?
It's not an overlay, I don't believe it's an overlay district. I believe it's a separate future land use map, just like the flow, that also has to be complied with. You've got to be consistent with both. And if this were a neighborhood commercial use, it would be consistent with both, because neighborhood infill would allow it. So there is no conflict right now between this particular parcel's designation on the future land use map component of the comprehensive plan, nor is there a conflict with the neighborhood commercial designation in the Inlet Beach Neighborhood Plan. They both allow for a neighborhood commercial use on that side. What is being proposed is not that. So the remedy here is to amend the comprehensive plan so that it's consistent with their proposed use.
Now, this is, so this is a large-scale amendment going to, twice a year to Dallas?
We're no longer restricted on the twice-a-year. It can be done now. It could have already been done.
Just has to go to a public hearing.
Yes, there is no restriction on when you can apply for a large-scale amendment in Walton County.
Okay. Any other questions? Anyone in the audience care to speak to this particular project? Please come forward, state your name for the record, please, and if you have been sworn.
I haven't been sworn.
You solemnly swear or affirm the testimony you're about to give before this board will be the truth.
I do.
And would you say you haven't given it?
Betty Letcher again. I didn't know this was all going to come up tonight, but I don't understand, if they really want this, then why don't they do the large-scale amendment like what's supposed to be done? I don't know why he keeps objecting to this, and he keeps trying to go against what we have had for a long, long time. I don't quite understand, so just wanted to make that clear.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, is anyone else in the audience care to speak to this particular project? This gentleman here. Have you been, make sure you've been sworn, and give us your name, please.
I'm Fleet James, and I'm here representing Colin Pearson, the owner.
Have you been sworn?
No.
What is your name, sir? Your name?
My name is Charles F. James III.
Oh, Charles James.
I go by Fleet.
Fleet James.
Mr. James, you raised your right hand. He solemnly swear or affirm the testimony you're about to give before this board will be the truth.
I do.
Thank you.
Like I said, I'm here representing the owner, Colin Pearson. He doesn't think he's doing anything wrong. All of the area around this piece of property is residential. There are already three houses on it. If you approved it for six houses, it would still be less than what the density allows for single-family houses. It's a time thing, and it costs money for, to go through all the hoops when you've got pieces of property surrounding you in this whole area that they're all residential. I mean, yes, the end result is going to probably be the same thing, but it's an expense to go through that. When it's, I don't, we don't think it's necessary, because all of the other areas are exactly like it. I mean, it already has three houses on it. We're just asking for six. The other areas, if they have this much land, they have eight houses.
Yes, sir.
Thank you very much.
Anyone have any questions for this gentleman? Thank you. All right, rebuttal?
Well, I'd like to say that, you know, Mr. Carpenter suggested that this was done incorrectly in the past, and I think that's pretty presumptuous to say that, you know, we're right now and everyone was wrong before. That Inlet Beach Plan's been around since 96. We knew about it when I did those projects back then. Staff then interpreted it that this is infill and single-family is allowed. So, you know, I don't think that there was an error made. I know there wasn't an error made in the past. And to be consistent, we need to continue to interpret things the same way as we've always done. And once again, they're trying, the staff is applying this as an overlay district, and it is not an overlay district. It says in the Land Development Code that the Inlet Beach Neighborhood can change the plan to an overlay district, which indicates that it is not currently an overlay district. So we can't apply those rules to the Inlet Beach Plan.
All right, so thank you very much. Anyone have any more questions for this gentleman? Okay. Anyone else in the audience care to speak? We're giving everybody a chance. Ma'am, you've already spoken. Ma'am, you've already spoken.
Can I say one more thing? I forgot to say it. One more thing?
One more thing, and then...
Mr. James had mentioned the cost and time and expense to do the large-scale amendment. There's also the chance that it won't get approved. I mean, we could go through all that stuff and have opposition to a change to the Inlet Beach Plan, and I have been told that they are against any change to their plan. So that's another concern. Thank you.
And if I could rebut that just one more time and remind the board that the BCC just amended the Inlet Beach Traditional Neighborhood Plan in a fairly large way, just down the street from this particular property. And we had absolutely no opposition. We had interest and concern about what was going in there and what it was changing to, like we would expect to see in any time that we proposed to change the map. But staff would support a large-scale amendment to amend the plan, to make it consistent so that this project couldn't move forward. And I think the neighborhood would support it because it is a less intense use than what could possibly go there.
Yeah, I think you've made that pretty clear, Mac.
Thank you.
Okay. If there's no other public comment, we will close to public comment. Commissioners, I would entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to deny.
I have a motion to deny. Do I have a second? As chairman...
I'll second it.
I have a motion and a second. Time for discussion. Ladies and gentlemen, we need to make some kind of a decision on this thing tonight. This has gone on and on and on, and like the gentleman said, it does cost money, it does cost time. I think the staff has laid out their premises pretty well, and I think this gentleman has brought his stuff in tonight. We've given him the time. He does still have, regardless of what we vote for tonight, he still has to pass the BCC, and he has an opportunity to take whatever we say tonight to the BCC, so...
Well, I think that, I mean, technically, Mac may be right, I don't know, but it seems, you know, it really, really defies reality that this is, that they need to go back through a large-scale amendment for a couple, for such a, I mean, for such a small thing, and there seems to be some doubt as to whether this is an overlay district or not. And I personally think it's just a very logical thing, and I can't support, I'm not going to vote for him a second. I'd definitely discuss it.
All right, we have any other discussion? Then, I'd care to vote, a show of hands, all in favor of denying this tonight, raise your hand. One, two, three. All in favor of accepting it, raise your hand.
I think it was the same vote as when we tried to let him present it last time.
Well, actually, no, this is, the last time you tabled it, this time you're voting not to recommend the project to the Commissioners.
So he can go forward. The good news is he can go forward.
And go forward to the BCC. It was denied by us, but you can go forward.
Yeah.
Okay. Is any other business coming before us tonight? Otherwise, we will adjourn the business meeting. Oh, for the board. Don't forget, we have a special called Planning Commission meeting on the twenty-ninth at five o'clock. One item, one item only. And, Mr. Patton, I believe you said that you would not be here?
No, I will be here for that. I will be here in September.
Everyone here, I believe, is going to be there except Ms. Marfield.
Except Sally. Sally's having...
I have something new that I'd like to bring before the board.
Sure.
I'd like to make a motion that the BCC consider expanding the discussion of outdoor merchandise to the C thirty-eighth quarter.
Ooh.
Okey-dokey.
There's no restriction on the thirty-eighth quarter now.
I'd like to make a motion that the BCC consider it's the outdoor display, that they expand the consideration to include the C thirty-eighth quarter. That's my motion.
Mr. Patton, may I make a suggestion? Again, just to make sure we don't get in trouble here, since it was not agenda, what you're proposing was not agenda, why don't we place it on the special agenda that we have on the twenty-ninth, and you can make the motion there. That way it'll be noticed.
Thank you. That's great.
We stand adjourned. Thank you, ladies and gentlemen. Appreciate your time and your effort. Chance you didn't get a chance to talk tonight.
No, I get free time.
But our industrial park is moving.
It is.
Praise the Lord, pass the ammunition.